Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, June 29. At one meeting announcement, the meeting announcement is that council will continue to be virtually until further notice. All meetings will be cable cast on the City Channel and live streamed on the City Channel Pittsburgh YouTube Channel. And we are working on a return with Madam Clerk and IMP and Chief Casey, Kinsey Casey, who's making sure we return safely with the public coming in. Will the clerk please take the roll call?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, here. Ms. Gross, Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Cal Smith, President.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. As we join from our remote locations, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And our next order of business is proclamations. We have one from Councilman O'Connor to be read. And one from Councilman Coghill. We'll start with Councilman O'Connor.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1659. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commend Adeline Bariff for a beautiful life as a devoted wife, mother, grandmother, great-grandmother, and friend, and congratulates Adeline on the occasion of her 100th birthday. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Sunday, July 4, 2021, to be Adeline Bariff Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
We have a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proclamation is approved. Councilman, did you want to say anything?
No, just thank everybody. Obviously, the 100th birthday is a big deal, so thank you.
I'm hoping my mother sees it hers in August and will just say happy birthday to Adeline as well. And now we have Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1660. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend Mr. Namiaka for his hard work and leadership over the past 38 years and congratulates him on a well-deserved retirement. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, June 29, 2021, to be Gary Namiaka Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Can we have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
And the proclamations approved. And Councilman, do you have anything you want to say?
You know, Madam President, if I could, I just wanted to say we sent we sent Gary off with a great party on Friday night and lots of friends and relatives and Dan Gilman was there and, you know, 38 years and, you know, I wish him all the best. He and his family, they plan to do some traveling and, you know, things they couldn't do before. But I just wanted to say this is just the type of employee I hate to lose, especially in public works. You know, the hills and, you know, the difficult plowing streets that we have in the South Hills. I always felt, you know, best to bring the younger generation, younger drivers on was an experienced guy like that. So I do have him on the hook if we need him for training. We could bring him back as a, you know, maybe an independent contractor or something, but so, so I just wanted to add that good luck to Gary and his family. You know, 38 years, job well done. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also want to congratulate Gary and hope that he enjoys his retirement and thank him for his service to the City of Pittsburgh through DPW.
Yeah, Madam President?
Yes, Councilman.
Yeah, ma'am. Yeah. I just want to echo those remarks of yours and Councilman Coghill. You know, when I think of Gary, the word gentleman comes to mind. You know, one of the hardest working and most communicative members of the Public Works team. And, you know, I've had the pleasure of working side by side with him for the 14 years that I've been here now. And he will be greatly missed. He is truly one of the the great employees in the Public Works Department. And, and I too wish him all the very best in his retirement. And like Anthony said, hate to lose someone that that is that skilled in that department. But he deserves his retirement and I wish him nothing but the best in it. Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And there's the next order of business, which is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the Rules of Council states that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Profanity will not be permitted nor will threats. May we have the first speaker, please? Madam Clerk, can you go?
The first speaker is Thandell Thandley, followed by Sam Applefield.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. My name is Thando. I live in Bloomfield. And I'm a budget and policy analyst at the Pittsburgh Budget and Policy Center. And I'm here to talk about the American Rescue Plan spending that was released by this week by the city and the lack of public engagement so far. The City of Pittsburgh has received around $335 million in ARP funds, which is nearly 60% of the city's yearly operating budget. The Pittsburgh Recovery Task Force legislation introduced by councilmembers Burgess and Lavelle rightly proposes a stewardess equity first spending plan. What is not clear, however, is how the task force will ensure representation and input from the community and transparency in the process. Budget transparency is necessary for accountability to ensure our city makes the right choice in its basic approach to the use of ARP money. Nobody knows better what our communities need most than those communities that are most impacted by existing inequities and the current crisis. To build back to a better Pittsburgh, we must create robust processes for community engagement. In its guidance, the U.S. Treasury explicitly states that it urges states, territory, and tribal and local governments to engage their constituents and communities in developing plans to use these payments given the scale of funding and its potential to catalyze broader economic recovery and rebuilding. That's a direct quote from the U.S. Treasury. The closed-door process towards the mayor's office and the Pittsburgh Recovery Task Force had developed this spending plan is not transparent and it does not explain how these funding decisions were made. Have communities been engaged in spending decisions that directly affect them? How will their input be used to shape ARP spending? At the bare minimum, minimum in the annual budget cycle, there are meetings to inform the public about the budget process. There are online surveys to receive input before a budget is released. A community engagement plan that only relies on public comments in response to a budget already created by the mayor and task force does not engage constituents and communities in the development of spending plans. I call on the City of Pittsburgh to immediately engage in a community-driven, transparent process for deciding how to spend these critical American Rescue Plan funds. It's time to put our money where our values are. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Sam Applefield, followed by Kate Luxemberg.
Hello, my name is Sam Applefield. Good morning. Thank you all for having me. I serve as a project manager with the Pittsburgh Food Policy Council. We are a collective impact organization that brings together a network of over 100 food systems entities to create a just, equitable, and sustainable food system. We are public health professionals, food business owners, farmers, restaurant and hospitality workers, public officials, food security and anti-hunger organizations, hospitals, universities, and many more. The Council is a proud partner of the City of Pittsburgh, including on our current Pittsburgh Food Equity Ambassador's Program. In the wake of COVID-19, our region and indeed our nation has learned hard lessons about our food system. Vulnerabilities have been laid bare and system breakdowns have been impossible to ignore, from empty shelves at supermarkets to miles of cars lined up for food distributions. The pandemic proved that the food system is critical infrastructure and as such, recovery requires public investment in our local food system. The unprecedented funding from the American Rescue Plan Act provides an incredible opportunity for this investment, which other municipal governments across the country are making. In San Diego, for example, the Board of Supervisors allocated $20 million to support food distributions, community gardens, nutrition programs, and institutional procurement. While we applaud the few pieces in in the proposed budget that speaks to food system issues, such as $1 million to help businesses make their streeterys permanent and $2.5 million to fund a basic, a guaranteed basic income pilot, critical food systems issues are otherwise completely absent from this budget. This glaring omission begs the question, where is the public input in the process of developing this proposed budget? In a city where nearly 20% of residents are food insecure, a number that has almost certainly increased as a result of the pandemic, you know that systemic hunger needs to be addressed. At the Food Policy Council, we center the voices of city and county residents in the development of the Greater Pittsburgh Food Action Plan. This plan outlines 150 strategies to strengthen our regional food system, many of which could be funded through the ARP and bring great systems-level benefits to the region. Our top priority that we encourage council to consider is creating a food justice fund. Similar funds have been established in Philadelphia and Chicago and have supported on-the-ground urban agriculture, small business development, access to healthy foods, training and education, and emergency food distribution. This is an incredible opportunity for the city to take leadership, galvanize support of funders and other institutions in our region, and make critical investments in our regional food system. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Kate Luxemberg, followed by William Parker.
Hello.
Good morning. Yes, good morning.
Good. My name is Kate Luxemberg. I'm a resident voter in Borough of Wilkinsburg. Also, I provide data analysis to the Wilkinsburg Borough Council per contract. I'm a professional data analyst. I'm addressing you today because the Wilkinsburg Community Development Corporation, which is not an elected body, is contacting City Council members about their proposed merger of Wilkinsburg into City of Pittsburgh. Wilkinsburg Community Development Corporation does not represent the people of Wilkinsburg as a whole. This is well-known in Wilkinsburg that this is an entity that sort of belongs to one very small subset of Wilkinsburg population. Wilkinsburg is well-managed. You will be contacted by our Borough Council President and other Borough Council members to provide information about how we are well-managed as a community. And yes, our real estate tax mileage is higher than City of Pittsburgh's, but it is compensated for by the fact that our income tax, earned income tax, is lower. We do not seek a merger with the City of Pittsburgh. We would like to lower our real estate mileage and we can do that by bringing abandoned properties back to the tax rolls. We haven't been doing that well. We can do that better. And I urge you to turn a deaf ear to the arguments made by Wilkinsburg Community Development Corporation for taking Wilkinsburg by merger. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is William Parker, followed by Stephen Staney.
Good morning, everyone. My name is William Parker. I would just like to say now is not the time to be considering any proposal about an outgoing administration related to our city's American Rescue Plan funding, especially without first consulting with at least the newly-elected nominee for mayor. I read an article yesterday about this proposal that didn't include any money for our black-led tech startups. That alone was a signal that the racial lens that's being used to look at our city's wants and needs is still shadowed. And we voted on May 18th. We voted for change, not the same thing we've been getting for the last eight years. Trust is a part of the transition that is about to take place. We have to trust that our newly-elected administration will work smart and hard to deliver what we've been missing over the next four years. Our new mayor has to be credited for all of our future developments so that a great example of what black leadership looks like can be made and displayed across our city, state, and country. I encourage everyone who's listening to call the city councilor and ask them to hold off on any vote until after the new mayor is officially elected in a few months on November the 2nd. Thank you, everybody. Have a great day.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Last speaker is Stephen Staney.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Hello.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning. My name is Stephen Staney and I have lived in the Friendship area for the last 42 years. When I moved to this area, it was all crack houses and whorehouses. Many people moved here and helped clean up the crime, the filth and the graffiti. People didn't, the work it takes to change an area of Pittsburgh for the better. We put in stop signs where there were none. We fixed the streetlights where there were none. We trimmed bushes and trees and helped property owners clean up their property. Now it is clean, well-lit, and a safe place to live. We worked with the city and our councilman at the time, who was Bill Bedudoo, I don't think he remembers us though, to widen the streets and intersections where possible. And there hasn't been an accident in this area in over 30 years. The city wants to put in what they're calling improvements and what a group calling themselves Friendship Community Group, which doesn't really exist. It's a bunch of housewives causing trouble. And, and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, for some reason, is getting involved. They're trying to change the five-way intersection, which is in front of my home. And it's going to make it impossible for ambulances and and fire engines and such to get into this community. It's almost impossible now. And they're proposing putting up a thing called asphalt art. There is no such thing as asphalt art. It's called graffiti. And the city will be assessed $25,000 to pay for the graffiti and $25,000 every year to repaint it. And if goes, if all the plans go well and several of these are done, the city will be on the hook for $175,000 in painting every year. The homeowners here do not want any of this stuff. It's unsightly. It's destroying the neighborhood. It's stupid. And we're not going to pay for it. You can sink your tax dollars into it if you wish, but you're also going to have to compensate the homeowners here for their losses, which are going to be significant. Proposing a playground over top of a lake of sewage that's 25 feet deep and comes apart all the time is really dangerous. As soon as one of those kids goes down one of those holes and dies, I'm going to remind you that City Council approved this stuff.
Thank you.
Anyway, it is funny. I'm sorry.
I apologize. Continue.
Oh. It's the city is.
Okay. That exhaust our list of registered speakers. Being no further speakers, that moves us on to our next order of business. But before I do that, I do want to make some clarification. Just so the public knows, the introduction of the bills today are just that, an introduction to the public process. And so that this will begin our process to hear from the public and what they'd like to see happen with some of this funding. So I do want to encourage people that if they see something or think of something, to please the council members know. And we will be calling for a public hearing and post-agenda so that the public knows what they're talking about when they come to vote and they understand it, just, you know, as we've had our own briefings and understand. It's important for for the public to understand. So we will have both of those at the end of this meeting. And I'm just going to say, well, I'll say the rest of my comments for the after, after. But I'll just say for now, we'll go on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. And we will start with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Kraus for Councilman Burgess and Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works. Councilman Coghill.
Sorry. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1648, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 721, which authorized the mayor and directors of the Department of Parks and the Department of Public Works to enter into a lease agreement with the Pittsburgh Ballet Theater for a portion of real property located on Liberty Avenue between 29th and 30th Street to include the proposed lease for approval by a majority vote of council before final execution between the mayor and directors of the Department of Parks and Recreation and Public Works and the Pittsburgh Ballet Theater as required by the original 2019 resolution. Bill Number 1649, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 271, which authorized the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to enter on behalf of the city into a professional services agreement and/or commodities master agreement with Direct Energy Business LLC for the supply of electricity to city buildings and facilities, as well as additional services, including those in regards to the establishment of a sub-account on behalf of the members of Western Pennsylvania Energy Consortium. Said services shall be performed in conjunction with guidance provided by City's Energy Consultant email@NorthAmericaInc.
Thank you. And next is Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Am I right? Yeah, no new papers.
And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 1650, Resolution Providing for the Filing of Applications by the Commonwealth of PA Department of Human Services for Grants in connection with the Joint Jobs Initiative Program Employment Advancement and Retention Network and providing for the authorization to enter into agreements with various agencies and to pay for expenditures or costs to support, implement, and administer the program, cost not to exceed $3,828,594.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1651, Resolution Providing for Further Renewal by the Council of the City of a Declaration of Disaster Emergency ratified by Council on March 17, 2020, to extend the effectiveness of the declaration for 35 additional days, thereby making the declaration effective until August 3, 2021, in response to the ongoing public health emergency associated with the spread of the coronavirus. Bill Number 1652, Resolution Appropriating Federal American Rescue Plan Funding for a four-year period from January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2024, as recommended by the mayor and the Pittsburgh Recovery Task Force at a total cost not to exceed the amount received from the United States Department of Treasury. Bill Number 1653, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 645, Entitled, Resolution Making Appropriations to Pay the Expenses of Conducting the Public's Business of the City and for Meeting the Debt Charges thereof for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2021. So reopen the 2021 budget to account for American Rescue Plan funding. Bill Number 1654, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 646, Entitled, Resolution Fixing the Numbers of Officers and Employees of the City for the 2021 fiscal year and the rate of compensation thereof and setting maximum levels for designated positions so as to reopen the 2021 budget to account for American Rescue Plan funding. Bill Number 1655, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 647, Entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget and the 2021 CDVG Program and the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by increasing various line items by $57,349,840 with funding from the American Rescue Plan. Bill Number 1656, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with the Mar Duzel for services related to the Administration of the City's American Rescue Plan Act, funding at a cost not to exceed $200,000.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And let's watch. Councilman Lavelle.
Yeah, motion to waive the Rules of Council so Bill 1651 can be taken under final action today.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bill will appear on the end of today's meeting. Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
No new papers, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman.
There's a series of.
No, one second. There is a 1656 that's also requesting a waiver of the rule, Councilman Lavelle, from the administration.
So two bills?
1656.
My apologies.
So let's, should we take another vote on that bill, please?
Councilman Lavelle would want to make a motion for Bill 1656.
Motion, you said Bill 1656?
1656, yes.
Motion to waive the Rules of Council so Bill 1656 can be taken under standing committees tomorrow?
Yes.
A motion. Do we have a second?
A good second.
And can I just ask briefly what this is in regards to?
Bill 1560, 1656 is in reference to the Mar Duzel for services.
And I see the Councilwoman Gross's hand is up. Councilwoman?
Right, so this is 1656. The title reads that it's to enter into an agreement with Mar Duzel for services related to the Administration of the American Rescue Plan Act Funds. And so I'm wondering why that needs to be expedited. We haven't begun allocations yet. It's kind of, doesn't seem to me like it needs to be rushed out. I'm kind of, I'd away from Rules of Council.
Further discussion?
Yes. Well, first of all, is there anybody to answer the question? I, based on my understanding, it's just to to help with this whole process. So since the process was introduced, but I don't know about the rule, wait, Councilwoman, I think it's a good question. Councilman Kraus.
So just to offer up, I suspect, although I'm speculating, that it is to get contracts in place in the time perhaps necessary to do that. Council always has the power to hold a week tomorrow to and to not push it ahead. Council also has the power really to call it up on tomorrow's agenda as well, too, if we wish to choose to do that.
I'm recalling that we had some pushback the last time we contracted Mar Duzel because the contract hadn't really been RFP'd and there were other agencies that were aggrieved and they came to public comment and we had to bring it back to council and have some discussion. So it's a bad look that the administration is trying to rush this one through. So I would rather we get a little more information. Was it RFP'd? We can't tell because we're not seeing the RFPs anymore. I could go to the controller's website myself and look and see if it was on Beacon for an RFP and I can do that. But just just wanting to be cautious.
Yeah, and I hear you, Councilman, because I think I was the person who raised a lot of questions about that last one. Is there somebody that can address the concern before we make, before we continue from the administration one?
Madam President?
Yes.
I was just looking at the cover letter here from the acting director, Olzenger. Do we want to have her come to the end of the meeting, like someone to call her? It says exactly what we're suspecting is that it's for the services related to the administration of the rescue.
I definitely want someone to come answer the question.
Yeah, we could just leave it open. The motion is on the table, right?
Okay.
Okay.
We'll leave that one open then.
Appreciate it.
Okay, and then Councilman, I'm sorry.
Would you like to contact someone to come to the table or you want to?
We want someone to come, yeah. Jennifer Olzenger, yeah, is the person on the letter, but if there's anyone from that office.
We'll reach out.
And then Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services. And then Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services. We were in... No new papers, and we were on Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation Performance and Asset Management. I apologize, Councilwoman, for the eruption, but I'm thankful.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill number sixteen fifty-seven, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Department of City Planning to Execute Relevant Agreements to Receive Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission's Keystone Historic Preservation Planning Grants Program to Support Updating the Current Historical Context for the Manchester Historic District to Properly Reflect Events which Occurred that Supported the Civil Rights Movement and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed Seventeen Thousand Five Hundred Dollars. The Grant Requires a Match from the City in the Amount of Seventeen Thousand Five Hundred Dollars for a Total Project Cost of Thirty-five Thousand Dollars. Bill number sixteen sixty-one, Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number Forty-One of Twenty Twenty, Amending the City's Code of Ordinances at Title Six, Conduct Article One, Regulated Rights and Actions, Chapter Six, Twenty-Six-A, Temporary COVID- nineteen Emergency Plan, Emergency Pay Sick Leave, Amending the Temporary COVID- nineteen Emergency Pay Sick Leave Ordinance to Expire Upon Termination of the Federal Proclamation Nine 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 Four of National Emergency Concerning the COVID Bar... Coronavirus Z, Twenty Nineteen COVID- nineteen Pandemic.
Thank you. And then myself, I have one communication.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill number sixteen fifty-eight, Communication from Jennifer Olzenger, Acting Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Approval on behalf of the Department of Finance for Brian Shannon for the Acting Pay Policy Revised in June of twenty eighteen.
Motion to read, receive, and file.
Thank you, Councilman. And we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. It's approved. And now, do we have Jennifer? Is anyone on the line? Yet? I didn't see anyone get on. Councilwoman, I don't want to hold up this meeting, but I do think this is important. Do you mind if we approve this? And then tomorrow, if you have any concerns, I'll be right with you when you... If you want to make a motion to hold for a week.
Appreciate it. I, yeah, I've been trying to figure out. I was going to ask these questions tomorrow anyway. So I didn't realize it was going to be... In a week. I didn't realize it was going to be related, so I brought it up today. But I'll just ask this question tomorrow.
Okay. And so with that said, can we... All in favor?
Aye.
The... I'm sorry, this is the bill that we made a motion to?
The motion is to waive the rules to have it appear on tomorrow's standing committee.
Yes. For a bill number, was it sixteen fifty-six?
Yes.
I just want to make sure people, the public know. So we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed?
I don't know.
Want to oppose? And I'll say, oh... I'll abstain on it. So... Okay. With that said, that moves us on. So I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. That makes it... That we will have it on tomorrow's standing agenda. And we'll now move on to any unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before council? Seeing none, next story business is reports of committee for final action. Councilman Corey O'Connor, Committee on Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill number sixteen forty-two, Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill number sixteen forty, Resolution Amending Resolution Four Twelve, entitled Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Execute Relevant Grant Agreements to Receive Funding from Allegheny County Health Department to Develop a Public Health-Informed Diversion Program and Further Providing for Expenditures Under the Terms of Said Agreement to Increase the Amount Authorized by the Grant Agreement and the Amount Authorized for Expenditure.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of what I and the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call them all.
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
This is Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. It's finally passed. Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill number sixteen forty-three, Report of the Committee on Public Works for June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill number fifteen ninety-seven, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Receive Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Multi-Module Transportation Program to Provide Funding for the Construction of the Davis Avenue Pedestrian Bridge and further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed Five Hundred Thousand Dollars. Bill number fifteen ninety-eight, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Execute Relevant Agreements to Receive Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Multi-Module Transportation Program for Sidewalk Improvements to Irvine Street in the Hazelwood Neighborhood and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed Two Hundred Thousand Dollars. Bill number fifteen ninety-nine, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Independent Enterprises, Inc. in the Amount of Twenty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars for Restoration Work on McGee Street. Bill number sixteen hundred, Resolution Granting Unto Mary to La Mio, Their Successors and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense to Replace an Existing Entrance Ramp with a New ADA Compliance Entrance Ramp and Landing at Forty-Fifty-Five Liberty Avenue, Ninth Ward, Seventh Council District. Bill number sixteen oh-two, Resolution Granting Unto Northside Associates, Their Successors and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense to Reconstruct a Set of Existing Entry Steps for a Group of Town Homes at Ten, Twelve, Fourteen, Sixteen, Eighteen, Twenty, and Twenty-two Straught Street in the Twenty-Fifth Ward and at Twenty-four, Twenty-six, Twenty-eight, and Thirty Straught Street in the Twenty-sixth Ward, Sixth Council District. Bill number sixteen oh-three, Resolution Granting Unto McKnight Bank Tower LLC, Their Successors and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense to Install New... Two New Projecting Signs unto an Existing Building at Three-O-Seven Fourth Avenue, First Ward, Sixth Council District. Bill number sixteen oh-four, Resolution Granting Unto HRLP Fourth Avenue LLC, Their Successors and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense to Install a New Projecting Sign unto an Existing Building at Two PPG Place in the Fifth Ward, First Council District. Bill number sixteen oh-five, Resolution Authorizing the City to Enter into a Preservation Agreement with the Children's Museum of Pittsburgh. Bill number sixteen oh-six, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number four ninety-two, entitled Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter into an Agreement Between the City and Renaissance Three Architects for the Professional Architecture Services for Robert E. Williams Community Building Reconstruction and Design Document at a Cost Not to Exceed Three Hundred Twenty-One thousand two hundred ninety-six dollars and eight cents for Professional Services by Increasing the Total Allocation to Eighty-three thousand nine hundred fifty-three dollars and sixty-three cents.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of what I and the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call them all.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
This is Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. Are finally passed. Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill number sixteen forty-four, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill number sixteen thirteen, Ordinance Accepting a New Street Name, Mary Peck Bond Place in the Twelfth Ward of the City as per Recommendation by the Cities of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The following street name was approved by CPAC in June of twenty twenty-one. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title Four Public Places and Property, Chapter Four Twenty Uniform Street Naming and Addressing. Bill number sixteen fourteen, Ordinance Accepting the Name Change of a Portion of University Drive A and University Drive B to a New Street Name, Damon Drive, and Accepting the Name Change of a Portion of University Drive C and a Portion of University Drive A to a New Street Name, Uterback Drive in the Fourth Ward as per Recommendation by CPAC. The following street names were approved in May of twenty twenty-one. The names listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with Pittsburgh Code Title Four Public Places and Property, Chapter Four Twenty Uniform and Street Naming and Addressing. Bill number sixteen fifteen, Ordinance Accepting a New Street Name, Bell Tower Lane in the Ninth Ward of the City as Recommended by CPAC. The following street name was approved in May of twenty twenty-one. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title Four Public Places and Property, Chapter Four Twenty Uniform Street Naming and Addressing.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of what I and the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call them all.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
This is Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. Are finally passed. Now, can we have Councilman Kraus for Reverend Ricky Burgess? Councilman Burgess for the Committee on Urban Recreation.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill number sixteen forty-five, Report of the Committee on Urban Recreation for June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill number fourteen sixty-five, Resolution Authorizing Pursuit of Chapter One Seventy-Three of the Code, City Code, The Naming of a Public Fountain Located at Northeastern Corner of Allegheny Commons as the Patricia Reagan Rooney Memorial Fountain.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final... Final action. All in favor of the passage of its passage of what I and the name is called. When your name is called, those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call them all.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
This is Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. It's finally passed. Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Innovation Performance and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill number sixteen forty-six, Report of the Committee on Innovation Performance and Asset Management for June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill number fifteen eighty-seven, Resolution Further Amending and Supplementing Resolution Five Thirty-nine, entitled Authorizing the Mayor, City Clerk, and/or Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into a Contract with Granite Systems Inc. for Software Upgrades, Server Hosting Services, and Annual Maintenance of Ledger Star Agenda Management and Video Streaming in order to Extend the Contract in Additional Twelve Months with Additional Cost of Fifty-eight thousand thirty-three dollars and thirty-six cents. Bill number sixteen oh-nine, Resolution Amending Resolution Number Three Ninety-two of Twenty Twenty, which authorizes the City to Extend a Professional Services Agreement with Straight Grant LLC for Software Services relating to the E Properties Plus Profiling System by a Term of One Year at an Additional Cost Not to Exceed Thirty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty cents. Bill number sixteen ten, Resolution Amending Resolution Four Seventy-five, which provided for a Professional Services Agreement with NCR Corporation to provide Citywide Credit, Debit, and E-Check Payment Services for the Collection of Various Programs and Permitting Fees for the City by exercising the option to Extend the Term of the Agreement for Three Additional Years and No Additional Costs. Bill number sixteen eleven, Resolution Providing for the Mayor and the Acting Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement with Root Smart Technologies, Inc., which provide Trash and Recycling Routing Optimization for One, a Software Update Subscription to Route Smart Software, including a Maintenance fee covering Troubleshooting and Technical Assistance at an annual cost not to exceed seven thousand dollars, total not to exceed twenty-eight thousand dollars for Initial Contract Year with Three Renewal Option Years and Two End User Training on the Best Use of Root Smart Software, a Seven-Day Course to be Delivered Remotely at a Cost Not to Exceed Ten Thousand Five Hundred Dollars for Twenty Twenty-One Only.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of what I and the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call them all.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
This is Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. Are finally passed. That moves us on to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number sixteen forty-seven, Report of the Committee... Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill number sixteen oh-seven, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Full Facilities Plan for Gladstone Residence at Three Twenty-Seven Hazelwood Avenue.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of what I and the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call them all.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson? This is Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. Are finally passed. And that moves us on to motions and resolutions. And we have the final action on Bill sixteen fifty-one, the Declaration of Disaster Emergency. Councilman Lavelle?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, we have a motion. We had a second. Any discussion? Do we have... We had a second motion, a second, correct? Yeah.
We want to discuss. Let's read it first.
You want to read it again?
Yeah. Let's read it again. Bill sixteen fifty-one, Resolution Providing for Further Renewal by the Council of the City of a Declaration of Disaster Emergency ratified by Council on March seventeenth of twenty twenty, to Extend the Effectiveness of the Declaration for Thirty-five Additional Days, thereby making the Declaration Effective until August third, twenty twenty-one, in response to the ongoing public health emergency associated with the spread of the coronavirus.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of what I and the name is called. Those of those will vote no. The clerk, please call them all.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
This is Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. It's finally passed. And I will also have meeting announcements this afternoon at one P M. Council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill fifteen sixty-two as it relates to the resolution providing for the continued designation of a downtown Pittsburgh Business Improvement District. To register for this hearing, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by eleven A M. today. We just missed that. You will also register, you may also register by calling at four one two two five five two one three eight, also by eleven A M. Tomorrow, Councilwoman Lavelle, are you cheering that hearing?
If you can, it'd be very helpful to me, as I'll be driving. If not, I'll make it.
Glad to, yeah. I'd be glad to. And then tomorrow, Wednesday, June thirtieth, the council will meet for the Standing Committee meeting at ten A M., also chaired by Councilwoman Lavelle. Also tomorrow afternoon at eleven, at one thirty P M., council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill eleven thirty-five as it relates to the resolution declaring a state of educational emergency in the city of Pittsburgh, and that will be chaired by Councilman Reverend, Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess or Councilwoman Lavelle. To register for tomorrow's council meeting and public hearing, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by nine A M. For the Standing Committee meeting and by eleven thirty A M. for the public hearing. You may also register by calling four one two two five five two one three eight. Also, city residents and stakeholders are invited to share their input on the city's twenty twenty-two operating budget by taking surveys either online at www dot engage dot Pittsburgh P A dot gov forward slash twenty twenty-two budgets or by calling three one one. I want to thank our three one one operators for taking all that input. The twenty twenty-two operating budget survey is open through July eleventh at twenty twenty, July eleventh, twenty twenty-one. And can we also have, we discussed a motion to have a public hearing as it relates to the American Rescue, Rescue Plan and a post-agenda. Can we have a motion?
Did you make a motion? Do you need a motion?
I need somebody to make the motion.
I'll make a motion to have a cablecast post-agenda and public hearing on the American Rescue Plan Act allocations.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And we'll get this scheduled immediately, so I would look for something for next week for both of those or the, or the following week for the hearing. And I just, is there anything from members?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman.
Yes, I should have brought this up earlier while we were reading the bill about the dedication of the fountain to Mrs. Rooney at Allegheny Park. I just wanted to say how fitting and appropriate that was. You know, I was her roofing contractor for many, many years. Yeah, and I got to know her, you know, and she treated us just like anybody, you know, she was just very, but, but I also got to know how near and dear that park was. If, if you know where she lives, you know, the park almost spills out into her backyard, and I know Councilman Wilson is very familiar with the place, so. So she really put a lot of time, a lot of energy into beautifying that park. I believe she had an annual fundraiser every year, a hat party, I believe, and, you know, in order to raise funds for that park, so. I just wanted to mention I failed to do so, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? Anything else from members? So with that said, I will just say that I did ask Madam Clerk to schedule a council briefing with members in the Wilkinsburg Borough Council and the, those, in favor of those opposed of that merger, so that we know what we're talking about as we come to the public to start discussing more, in a more public way. And I believe Councilman Gross, were you going to call for a public hearing or something on that?
Um, we talked about a post-agenda, and I can make that motion now if you, if you'd like.
Yeah, yes, please.
So also, I'll motion for a post-agenda on the Wilkinsburg-City Pittsburgh merger.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Discussion possible or proposed? I don't, it sounds to me like it's going out there, so this is some kind of a done deal. There may be people advocating.
It feels that way to me, too.
Clarify my motion to add the word proposed.
Yeah. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Council. We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Any more further discussion? All in favor?
President, if I could just ask, so we're going to have a, did you say you called for a meeting with council members of Wilkinsburg with our council? Did I hear that correctly?
Councilman, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk is going to schedule that for us.
Okay, so all council members will be?
Yes, all council members. We want to hear from, from all sides, or from at least the both, both groups representing sides, especially the elected officials that were elected by the public to represent that area.
I'm sorry, and we'll also have a post-agenda?
For the public, yes, yes.
Okay, good enough. Thanks.
I think it deserves some conversation, not just, not just news releases here and there. I think it's actually insulting to our public that we represent, but that's how a lot of people are learning of this. Councilwoman Gross.
Right, so we're still in discussion. I'll also add that I intend that we should also address the process during the post-agenda, because I have conflicting input about what the actual steps are. Madam President was, or Madam Clerk and Madam President were helpful in kind of getting us some steps, but I feel like I see other people you know, putting forth a different series of steps, so that the actual legal process, which hasn't been done in a hundred years or so, is, I think, important also for everyone to have the same understanding about.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And do we vote on that? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm sorry, I'm so confused. Are we voting on holding the post-agenda? Is that correct?
In the public hearing, correct, Councilmember?
I just motioned only for a post-agenda for the Wilkinsburg thing.
Okay, okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Yes. Okay, so all in favor? Let's do that again. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, everyone. Thank you, and I'll save the rest of my comments for tomorrow. Anything else from members? Seeing then, can I have a motion to excuse the absent member? Approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting. Thank you. We have motioned a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're good. Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you, everyone.